Can you folks hear me?
Is the feedback here?
We can hear you.
Thank you.
Chi.
Present.
Ferenger.
Present.
Davis. Arenas. Iwamoto. Cherry. Rice. Webb. Mariano. Eight members present.
Thank you. We have four. Moving on to public safety reports. Back. Honolulu Fire Department also submits their report via email every month. Thank you for being here in person as well.
Good afternoon. My name is firefighter Adam Makiona. We're from the Oahu Fire Station by Don Kiyote Station 2. I guess first item we'll talk about today is the previous meeting. There's some questions previously requested. So first thing was HFD's role in public safety power shut-off, PSPS. The HICO expressed that PSPS would be implemented as a last resort. However, upon learning of the PSPS plan, the city working group added the PSPS as a new component to our respective disaster preparedness plans. The HFD will continue to collaborate with our partners and stakeholders, including city departments, state and federal agencies, the HICO, and non-government entities such as the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization. Together, we reviewed and analyzed various scenarios of readiness if and when PSPS is implemented. The second item was fire safety and evacuation planning for high-rise occupancies. The HFD's Community Relations and Education Section Facilities Fire and Life Safety Presentations, evacuation planning assistance and evacuation drills, and fire extinguisher training. Submit a request online at fire.honolulu.gov. We'll go right into incident statistics for June 2024. First thing is fires. Structure fires, we have zero. Wildland brush is zero. Nuisance is three. Cooking is zero. Alarms, no fire, is thirteen. We'll go into emergencies. Medical emergencies, we have one hundred and sixty-five. Motor vehicle collision with pedestrians is one. Motor vehicle crash collision is six. Mountain rescues is zero. Ocean rescues is one. Hazardous material incidents is one. And then we also have an asterisk here. Nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle. Next topic is fire safety tips and announcements. Our fire safety tip for this meeting is going to be heat safety. Hawaii has some of the highest average annual relative humidity in the country. When it is too humid, our bodies have a harder time cooling down, which can lead to heat-related illnesses. In the past decade in Hawaii, the average number of hot and humid days and very warm nights have more than doubled due to climate change and are expected to increase. Visit www.risillianohau.org forward slash subscribe to sign up for update heat in Hawaii this summer. Make sure you're prepared for the heat. Keep cool with fans, AC spaces, and in shade. Wear lightweight, loose-fitting clothing. Drink plenty of water. Stay out of the sun. Wear at outdoors or take an umbrella. Check your neighbors who are high risk for heat-related illnesses. And more resources about heat illnesses, extreme heat, and how to prepare at www heat.gov. And if you folks have any other questions or concerns, I think we have a number to call to if you need to get in touch with our CRO or PIO, which is eight oh eight seven two three seven one six eight. That's all I have, but if you folks have any questions.
Thank you Honolulu Fire Department. Board member questions? Community members? Thank you for being here today.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to Honolulu Police Department, I see Lieutenant Arnold Segucio online.
Good evening, Chair Lee. Lieutenant Segucio represents responsibility for Honolulu Police Department. Without further ado, because I know you guys have nominations and elections for today. So motor vehicle thefts for the month of June were listed as eleven. Previous month was twenty-four, so significant drop in that category. Burglaries were seven. Previous eight. Thefts were one hundred and twenty-three. Previous month was one twenty-one. UNVs or car break-ins were nineteen. Previous thirty-nine, so significant drop in also that category. Assaults were thirteen. Previous fourteen. Sex assaults were three. The previous month of May was one. Graffiti cases was two. Previous month was one. Drug-related offenses were ten. Previous month was fourteen. Total cost for service for your particular area was three thousand eight hundred and sixty-three compared to last the previous month was three thousand eight hundred and nineteen. So cost for service kind of remained the same in regards to the above criminal breaches to report at this time, but we did see a substantial and major decrease in car break-ins and motor vehicle thefts in the area. It possibly could be from an individual being arrested that may have contributed to the decrease in the cases for your area. Major Paul Okimoto also started an initiative of higher concentrated patrols for the Kiamoku area due to the community concerns. I'll be monitoring this and see if the initiative is making a difference. Major Okimoto also wanted to thank the community for coming out to his meet the major coffee hour at Ward Villages last Friday. It was a good turnout. I want to thank Board Member Jeannie Rice for coming and expressing her concerns and meeting with us. There was a lot of community concerns that was brought up during that coffee hour and be reassured that D1 will be addressing those issues in the real near future. So to echo on HFD safety tip, the safety tip for the month of July is regarding checking our backseats of our vehicles. With temperatures running high during the summer months, we want to keep our kiki and pets safe. Temperature be in, you know, temperature within a closed vehicle can get over to one hundred twenty degrees in several minutes if your vehicle is parked in direct sunlight. With people rushing and having things to get done during the day, we may sometimes forget that we have our precious cargo sleeping or resting on the backseat. Let's have our community members just make the conscious habit to just check so that we can prevent any tragedies. At this time, I can, I'm going to yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members and public attendees.
Thank you Lieutenant Segucio. Board members, questions? Member Mariano.
Good evening Lieutenant. How you doing?
Very good, sir.
Yeah, I just want to bring up my favorite topic. You said that graffiti was up only two, but when again, when I go around Alamoana Kakaako, I see more and more graffiti. So are you just saying that the increase in two just in public defacing versus private owners because of the jurisdiction?
I didn't look into those particular graffiti cases. However, most graffiti cases don't get reported. Usually private property owners just usually go ahead and paint it over. Sometimes they don't get to paint it over, so that's when we usually contact our CPT officers, our community policing team, so we can reach out because obviously the broken window theory applies in regards to graffiti. So if we can at least build partnerships with the community, assist them in maybe doing a paint over or get them to initiate their own paint over, that would help with that broken window theory in, you know, preventing a future crime in the area.
Yeah, and the reason I bring this up is as I notice some of the businesses that's closing and, you know, it's vacant for a short timeframe, the first thing that goes up is graffiti. The next thing you know is it's more of a hindrance and it becomes a a place where residents can normally not walk in that area because of potential high crime event and you know, possibly the homeless population. So I know that HPD is doing their best and I appreciate all that they're doing, but if we can keep track of those numbers as well, that will help us with documenting some of the initiatives that we want to do to help recommend strengthening the laws so that we can capture these individuals that just graffiti and defacing Hawaii, particularly Alamoana Kakaako. Not look.
Absolutely, Mr. Mariano. If you have a particular location where all these graffiti is popping up and it's kind of becoming an eyesore and it's on private property, if you can just shoot me a text or an email and I can help my officers reach out to the property owners and we can try to see if we can schedule a paint over for that location.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Member Secretary Rice.
Hi Lieutenant Segucio. Just to add on to Lynn's, who do we contact if graffiti is in like Alamoana Beach Park or Kakaako Waterfront Park? Is that HPD?
Probably do is it's, we'll take a look at the graffiti. We'll probably generate a CPD or criminal property damage case and then we would probably forward that report to Parks and Recs, especially for Alamoana Beach Park is Parks and Recs or the other way that people can report graffiti is there's a graffiti hotline. I don't have the phone number really available to me, but you know what, right after this, I'll post it on the chat so that people can see the graffiti hotline phone number.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Member Rice. Member Ferenger and then Member Mariano.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. I'm on my phone coming from work and so I just wanted to say one thing and that over the July 4th week holiday, there was a lot of graffiti that was done over in Alamoana Beach Park over by the tennis courts and I noticed within a week that that was all painted over and I just think that's awesome. I just wanted to point that out. I was really, really impressed with how quickly that was rectified. So thank you to whoever did that.
Thank you, Member Ferenger. Member Mariano.
Yeah, it's just one last thing, just to follow up on that. Is it possible Lieutenant to get with HPD Public Announcements or Public Affairs to work with the city to put out some type of advertisement? Particularly, I know everyone like myself is concerned about the defacing. Put out some kind of public announcement that says if you see an act, if you see them, report the graffiti and here's the number.
Absolutely. You know what? I'm going to reach out to Captain Parker Bodie. I don't think he's in that detail anymore, but he was the person that was doing those commercial social media blasts. He might be able to direct me to a person. And then yes, I'll bring up that whole thing about with regards to graffiti and the penalties. Just maybe we can cause some deterrence by just doing some social media advertisement.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Thank you Lieutenant Segucio for being here this evening to answer all of our questions. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. You guys have a great night.
Thank you. Moving on to board business. Three point one nominations and election to fill a current vacancy for sub-district. What do we have? Any nominations? We are going to move this to the August agenda. Three point two, election of officers to serve from July twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth. Chair, vice chair, Camilla, can we make a correction that Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board eleven has two vice chairs? The first vice chair and a second vice chair. Secretary, treasurer, and any other officer, the board determines it needs to conduct its business. Nominations for chair.
Thank you, Chair. I'll nominate Kathleen Lee or.
I'll second.
Thank you. Board members, discussion? Okay, thank you. Call for a vote? Objections? Okay, thank you wonderful board members for again nominating and electing me to be the chair for this board. Okay, nominations and election for second vice chair. First vice chair.
I'll nominate Dyson Chee for first vice chair.
Nominated by Treasurer Iwamoto, seconded by second vice chair Farina's. Discussion? Anyone opposed? Okay, it looks like first vice chair Dyson Chee is first vice chair Dyson Chee again. Congratulations Dyson. Nomination for second vice chair for our board.
I nominate Jeannie Rice.
Okay, second.
I second.
Case nomination for Jeannie Rice for second vice chair. Discussion? Okay, any opposition? Okay, we have second vice chair Jeannie Rice. Nomination for secretary.
I nominate Emma Davis for secretary.
Okay, nominated and seconded. Opposition? Okay, an opposed. It looks like Emma Davis is now our secretary. Opposition for treasurer.
I nominate Lori Farinas.
I second it along with Emma Davis. We both second her.
We have two seconds. Opposition for this Lori Farina is for treasurer of Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board. No opposition? It looks like we have our board officers for. Lori Farina opposes. Anyone else?
I nominate Lynn Mariano.
I second.
Okay, so now we have Member Mariano nominated for treasurer of the board. Discussion? Any opposition? Okay, it looks like Lynn Barry Mariano is our new treasurer for board. Congratulations everyone and thank you for a very efficient nomination and election process. Moving on, approval of the June twenty fifth twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any edits, additions, deletions?
I'm with SAP approved.
Okay. Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay, June meeting minutes approved. Thank you, board. Report from our July eleventh twenty twenty-four Action Committee meeting, committee chair Emma Davis. Committee Vice Chair Dyson Chee for report on the Action Committee meeting earlier this month.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Testing.
Yes.
Wonderful. My apologies for not being there in person. I am currently stuck in the office and so am unable to turn on my camera as well, but I am here. As for the board report, members Rice and Farina and myself had a very lively and fun conversation. One of the things we do have that we discussed from the last meeting is our running draft of the resolution establishing a comprehensive community support initiative. I am going to go ahead and drop this resolution into the chat so that way everyone can take a look at it. Here's the link to the docs that has a resolution in there. Please take a look at it. I think that this resolution is ready for introduction. So I'd like to, if it's okay with the board, I think we can go ahead and entertain a motion to introduce this resolution. I'm sorry, was everyone able to hear me?
Yes, our to share the resolution on screen so that the people online and in person are able to see the text on what we have for the.
Give me ten seconds. Oh. Thank you, Member Davis, for sharing your screen. Let's actually go with that instead. There we go. I can go ahead and read this resolution out loud as well in case this helps everyone. So we have a resolution establishing a comprehensive community support initiative. Whereas there is a pressing crisis demanding urgent action to provide a safe and supportive community environment for all residents. Whereas it is imperative to acknowledge that homelessness is not a crime yet by not providing a viable solution, the criminalization of poverty is perpetuated and it is our responsibility to maintain clear boundaries to uphold our standards for public health and safety. Whereas the burden on the Honolulu Police Department, otherwise known as HPD, among other government and social organizations to carry out social services is unsustainable, especially with nine eleven, excuse me, nine one one serving as the primary pathway for most community concerns, creating a bottleneck effect. Whereas continuous suites and sanitation efforts contribute to instability and exacerbate the prevalence of mental health issues, which is contrary to the true need for fostering a sense of belonging, consistency, and routine within the community. Whereas consistent and safe access to fundamental necessities, including but not limited to potable water, food, bathroom and shower facilities, and healthcare, et cetera, is a basic human right and must be systematically addressed. Whereas concerns regarding safety must be addressed through oversight mechanisms while allowing for self-regulation within established guidelines. Whereas many residents possess unique skills but face challenges with employment eligibility. Additionally, there exists a strong desire among residentially challenged residents to contribute to the community. Be it resolved that the successful construction and implementation of proposed permanent transitional housing. The Neighborhood Board hereby supports the establishment of a kauhale and comprehensive community support initiative, i.e. a multi-tiered system of support and success aimed at addressing the aforementioned concerns and implementing the proposed solutions in collaboration with relevant stakeholders, allocating necessary resources and funding for its effective implementation and sustainability. Be it further resolved that the Neighborhood Board supports the establishment of a more structured system that does not solely rely on HPD and law enforcement agency as well as the sufficient funding and staffing for nine one one operators to efficiently and expediently patch through calls to the contracted social service organizations in order to alleviate the current burden on HPD officers. Be it further resolved that the Neighborhood Board strongly urges the implementation of a transition period for individuals facing housing challenges that includes multi-tiered supports, including one, the integration of social workers and volunteer mentors. Two, resident managers to support the sustainability of the system. And three, residents of the kauhale who are involved in its development and operation while considering structured and encouraged access, resource pricing, and technological costs. Be it further resolved that the Neighborhood Board strongly urges the establishment of business partnerships, structured communication with social workers slash mentors, and financial literacy supports to encourage long-term progress towards financial stability and other entry-level slow, low-stakes volunteer opportunities, e.g. general maintenance, gardening, painting. And it said in exchange for non-monetary incentives, i.e. pay for a meal with considerations for human resources backslash monitoring, logistical supports, and provision of tools slash supplies. Be it finally resolved that the Neighborhood Board commits to monitoring and providing oversight to this resolution as well as to help ensure adequate support for the initiatives as submitted in this resolution.
Thank you, first vice chair. Chi.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we adopt your resolution as written.
Motion to adopt made and seconded. Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Several of these community action committee meetings that we have. Just want to, one, give thanks to the committee for working diligently. And just to let the public know that this committee has, is a structure, is a standing committee and that we have participation from many different facets of residents that came to include the state and the city, housing authorities to come and help participate in this process. So this resolution is not taken lightly and, you know, this is a step we believe in the right direction. And so I urge my fellow board members to vote in favor of this resolution because one, we'll have oversight. Two, you know, it puts on notice the city and the state that we are serious about solving the homeless challenges in the Alamoana Kakaako area and that this resolution can also be further used by other neighborhood boards to help it across the island of Oahu. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Member Iwamoto.
Yes, I just wanted to first of all thank Member Rice for starting us off with her initial resolution. Thank you so much for for doing that. And then Member Davis and also Member Chi for picking up that ball and running with it and doing such a great job fleshing it out. There was a lot of ideas that we went through a really extensive process with a lot of stakeholders chiming in and it feels really great to have witnessed and participated in that and then to see the outcome. So thank you so much for your leadership.
Board members, thank you. We'll go ahead and put this to vote if that is all right with our members and it's going to be a roll call vote.
Okay, the motion on the table is to adopt the resolution as written. Chang. Chi.
Aye.
Davis. Arenas. Iwamoto. Mariano. Rice. Webb. Not here. Ferenger.
Aye.
Cherry. Eight in favor. The motion is adopted.
Congratulations board on this resolution. Moving on, proposed board recess dates for August twenty twenty-four to June twenty twenty-fifth. The current proposal is for December twenty-fourth. Just because it's the holiday, we can get a motion to get that to press to be voted on. Motion by Member Davis. Can we get a second? Okay, any opposition to December fourth twenty twenty-fourth as a recess for our board? Seeing no opposition from those in person and online, we will be having that as a recess for our board. Thank you, members. Attendance at other meetings. We have, we're past six thirty, so if anyone would like to briefly talk about any other meetings that they have attended. And if not, we are going to go into recess for our candidate forum. Board members, if we could have uh you seated over there, and candidates who are running for office, if we could have you here up in the front to replace a seat over here, just so the public can see you. Okay, do we have all the candidates in the front? Anyone else we're missing? Are there any candidates online that we may be unaware of? If there are, please let us know. Okay, candidates, are you ready? Thank you for being here today. This is our Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board Candidate Forum. We appreciate you being here in person, and if anyone's online, we appreciate you being online as well. I'm going to go over some housekeeping rules. Uh, we are going to try to keep it within two hours. So that means your intro will be up to two minutes and up to a minute for your closing. I know I mentioned in my email that we were looking at up to two minutes for the response for each question, but you know, it in the interest of time, we are looking at up to a minute and thirty seconds for each response. Mahalo for the community members for being here, as well as you folks for meeting us here and, you know, being a part of this candidate forum. We also appreciate Ololo being here to record this this evening. Uh, without further ado, we'll go ahead and introduce the candidates. For Senate District Twelve, we have Senator Sharon Moriwaki, Shotaro Dabs. For House District Twenty Two, Twenty Three, we have Patrick McCain, Ikaika Olds, and Ian Ross. House District Twenty Four, we have Representative Adrian Tam. House District Twenty Five, we have Speaker Scott Psyki. Is he online?
Yes. I'm here online.
Okay, Speaker, can we make sure that we can hear you? You do a mic check real quick.
Okay, can you hear me?
A little bit faint.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. And Kim Kokoiwamoto. For Council District Five, we have Representative Scott Ishimoto and Brendan Schultz. Okay, uh, so thank you again for being here. Our, we have our board, um Lori Farinhas and Lynn Barry Mariano, who will be reading the questions. You have up to a minute and thirty to answer each question. The first question will be asked by Member Farinhas. I'm so sorry. I just went down the roll. Two-minute introductions for each candidate. Let's start with Senator Moriwaki at the end of the line.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sharon Moriwaki. Um, I just want to spend a little time telling you about my background. Um, I spent my whole life in public service, uh, starting with uh uh being the um Administrative Director of the Courts, also with the Labor Department, and uh was the Personnel Director for the State. Uh, I spent my last part of my career, professional career, at the University of Hawaii as Assistant VP uh for Administration. Uh, uh, the last six years, I've spent as your senator. I um want to just tell you, I ran for office because I felt that the community uh needed a voice in the Senate. Um, I I started because there were and Andrew Gomes in the Star Advertiser in twenty fourteen with a picture of twenty-some-odd high-rises that luxury condos that were going to go up in Kakaako. And the the caption was, wow. And and it was that that my neighbors and I came together and we started to rally around what we didn't know was HCDAs. And it was the Hawaii Community Development Authority. And there was no community in that Hawaii Community Development Authority. It was development. And so we fought hard for that. We didn't get anywhere. And so um I went to to see Speaker Psyki, and he was very supportive. He helped us in terms of getting the community together. We worked on it. He changed the composition of the board. We uh also went to our senator. The senator did not respond. He did not think the community was that important. The development had to go on in Kakaako, and so he told us, if you don't like it, you run. And the rest is history. So so I say that the reason why I'm here is because community is important. I really believe that all of us working together can make a difference.
Thank you, Senator.
Should I jump right into it?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, Chair. Aloha, everyone. Uh, my name is Ian Ross, candidate for State House District Twenty Three. Uh, up until about a week ago, I had the honor of serving as Chair of one of the sister boards, Makiki Laura Punchbowl Tantalus Neighborhood Board. Our House District is blessed to have four neighborhood boards, and I really do mean blessed. If I have the honor of serving as a State House representative, I'll take what I've learned from the Neighborhood Board system, how I've learned to navigate and work with people across boards. That includes your Chair Kathleen, includes Winston Welch over for the Kapakulu Neighborhood Board, and even Paul Reba, the fourth candidate in our State House race. He and I have uh worked together on a number of resolutions and priorities. I want you to know, for the attendees and for the members, I truly believe in what you're doing. I think it's so critical to have grassroots, um, small-d democratic participation in our communities. What you do to isolate and come up with priorities to navigate the complexities of government, I think, is really invaluable. And I think it's important that you have a strong voice in the legislature who can be a force multiplier for the work that you do and someone who can help you navigate the system and someone who will accept your help and your advice and your wisdom in the community. Right now, a State House District represents about twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand people, and no one individual can know what's going on everywhere. So one of the things I've been doing is I've knocked all the doors of the district, is giving out my personal cell and email address. And the amount of insights and problems I've heard in the community, the little things that we've been able to file reports on or work with area legislators on, I think is really important. So in addition to five years as Neighborhood Board Chair, I also bring eight years of experience legislatively. Four inside the building as an aide and a bill drafter, and four outside in uh public health advocacy. Uh, three with the Alzheimer's Association, and for the past year, I had the honor of working as the Public Affairs Director at the Y and I Coast Conference of Health Center. What I've really learned from that is this is a community that really has a limitation of resources, and I've learned how to make a big impact with a little, and I hope to be able to do that as your strongest voice in the state legislature. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ian Ross.
Two minutes, right?
Yes.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Adrian Tam. I am the current State Representative for House District Twenty Four, which represents Waikiki, part of Alamoana, part of Makali Moiliili. Uh, I want to thank the Neighborhood Board for hosting this candidate forum tonight so that everyone has a chance to hear from all the candidates running. So a little about me. I'm born and raised here in Honolulu, Hawaii. I went to one of our public schools here. I graduated from Colony High, so I'm very proud of that. I always tell everyone that I'm a product of our public school system, and I'm grateful for every single teacher that's helped my handle. Sorry. I ran for office because, you know, people um are leaving in droves, and, you know, there are people that are like me, who have the same resume, have the same upbringing, but are forced to leave because they can no longer afford be part of that. I'm very, very lucky that I have a very supportive family here. And, you know, for many people, that's not the case. So that's why I ran for office, and I'm really glad that the community gave me a chance. And through the time that I've been on, worked on many issues relating to affordable housing, to mental health, to homelessness, to um, you know, economic diversification, and I'm hopeful that I can have the opportunity to do that again. I'm gonna make one promise tonight. I'm gonna try to keep all of my reports short, so it doesn't have to be two hours. So thank you so much and aloha.
Thanks so much. I'm State Representative Scott this year. Uh, board members, the members who are coming out tonight. Took a group of seniors a week and priorities, and a senior raises her hand and she says, first and then another senior says, I'm baked. Another senior tells me, hey, um, on your background. So let me go through my background a little bit. Um, raised in this district. I'm a son of this district. Uh, I went to Mother Rice Preschool. I went to Manoa Elementary for uh K through six. I went to St. Louis for intermediate school. I went to Midpac for high school, and then I went to UH for undergrad and law school. Did two years in Senator Noe's office in DC, came back for law school, and then to get elected in uh two thousand and two to the State House. Been there ever since. Um, I'm making the switch to the council. It's not something that I took lightly. Um, I made the decision in October. In November, I started walking the district door to door. I've I've knocked thousands of doors in the past nine months to get feedback of what the different communities want and what they care about, and I've collected a lot of information um that I hope to use um as your councilperson, hopefully, but um it's been a great experience listening to different communities, getting feedback, and then putting it into action.
Aloha. My name is Pat McCain. I was on this board uh twenty years ago, and I was the only vote against uh Walmart at the time. Um, I have worked at uh uh city, state, and federal legislative and executive branches. I worked Hawaii State Senate eighty-one, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, uh Honolulu City Council eighty-eight to ninety, the US House from ninety-one to ninety-seven. I was Neil Abercrombie's Chief of Staff. I worked in the mayor's office. I was the president of the Hawaii Restaurant Association. Um, I retired as a federal officer from the Department of Homeland Security in two thousand and eighteen. Um, I'm I'm running for office because the seat opened up. It hadn't, it's, you know, Scott was doing a good job, and he was there for twenty years or so, and uh I didn't know it was gonna come open, but when it did, I jumped in. My opponents are good guys, and uh um I would support them under different circumstances. Uh, one thing that I would like to encourage uh potential legislators is to uh hold the executive branch accountable. I'm under the belief that uh the legislature passes a budget and the executive branch does whatever the hell they want. And I would recommend uh that there be a legislative branch defense fund, and when they don't do it, sue them. And when when the uh uh when when you figure out the legislative schedule in January, work in the veto override session, you know, and tell people, don't go to Alaska fishing after the thing because we're having a veto override. If you scheduled a veto override session, it would immediately uh change the balance of power and shift it back more towards the legislative branch where it belongs. Uh, thank you very much. Aloha.
Good evening. I'm Kim Kokoiwamoto. I'm running for State House for District Twenty Five, which is Alamoana, Kakaako, and downtown Honolulu. Um, I started off my career as a public interest attorney, uh, doing legal clinics in community centers across the state, as well as in homeless shelters. Um, I spent, um, basically what I do is I try to help people. Um, I listen to them. I meet with them. I I hear them out. I hear what they're trying to, um, what struggles they're having, and that's the best part I love about campaigning. Um, I don't like losing, but I do like, I do like keeping it to to connected to the community, hearing what they have to say. Like this gentleman back here, he's being inconvenienced very greatly by the elimination of bus route eighteen. And if I wasn't in front of a building trying to hear the neighbors talk about what their concerns and hopes are, we, I would, I wouldn't get that information. I wouldn't get the information that the Kapuna at Wastaria Vista, they had their common room locked out. Um, the common room where they have meals and share meals together. Um, it's where they don't, where they fight off alienation and isolation, um, which we know for for elders, it's really important that they have connection to each other. That community room at Wastaria Vista was locked to the residents for ten days. Um, because I was there hosting a coffee hour, they told me about it on a Saturday. That Monday morning, I made tons of calls from the governor's office to the long-term care butts person to Senator John Oakland, who I know is an advocate for Kapuna. Um, and I got all of these people to call the property manager, and indeed, they unlocked that building, uh, that room um immediately um that afternoon. So um, thank you. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. I'm I'm running to represent you, the people, not the developers, not the, not the corporate lobbyists, not the money special interests. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Shotaro Dabs. I'm a candidate for State Senate District Twelve. A little background about me. I was born and raised in Waikiki, uh, been there my whole life and still live there. Um, little family background is my dad was incarcerated when I was a kid. Mom's a single mom, you know, having to work two jobs, eighty hours a week, so I'm in that working class type of, you know, person. Uh, education-wise, I went to public school my whole life, Waikiki Elementary, Kamaki Middle, and then Kalani High School, where at um sixteen, I dropped out and got my G Where at sixteen, I dropped out and got my GED in McKinley Adult School. From that point, I had to work. I had to help my mom. So, from sixteen, I've been working full-time jobs in all sorts of industries, from retail, food, hospitality, finance, and everything. One day, I got an Indeed ad for a job at the state legislature as a legislative aide. I got lucky. Worked my first session in two thousand and twenty-three, and the first second I walked in those doors, I knew I wanted to run and kind of make a difference. I didn't know what I was gonna run for yet, but, you know, I finally decided. After that, yeah, I'm here now. Reason I'm running is I just want to make sure, you know, no kid has to live that type of life I lived. And we slowly see that pretty much everyone is going through that type of life now. So, thank you, and thank you, Chair.
Aloha, everybody. Hope you're doing well. It's a pleasure to be here this evening with you. My name is Brendan Schultz, and I am a candidate for Honolulu City Council District Five. Was born and raised on the island of Oahu and grew up throughout the United States as a proud child of a US Navy captain. Professionally, I've dedicated my entire career to humanitarian aid and international development. I've taught English in Palestine. I've worked in the Kalahari Desert. I have advised the government of Rwanda on refugee integration, and most notably, I now run an international nonprofit that operates in post-genocide communities in Southeastern Europe to promote inter-ethnic understanding with young people. When I explain my background, some people wonder why I'm putting myself through running for elected office. In fact, right before I came here today, I responded to an email where a constituent said, "You seem like a reasonable person. Why are you doing this to yourself?" And how I responded to him is that every time I come back to Hawaii, I am very, very happy to be here. As soon as I get off the plane and the humidity, the humid air hits my face, I can't help but smile. But I can't help but also be frustrated that I'm having to delay starting a family because of our affordable housing crisis, that I need to be more alert when I run on the streets at night because of the rise in crime, and that we have a city council that has decided that the most important thing for them to do is to give themselves a sixty-four percent pay raise to six-figure salaries, which they did this past year. I'm the only candidate in this race that has pledged not to accept that pay raise and who details all of my policy proposals to reduce our cost of living, ensure community safety, and restore government integrity on my website. Thank you very much. I look forward to the conversation that we're gonna have this evening.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Zekiko Olds, and I'm running for House District Twenty-three. So, I am the only individual that's in our race that doesn't have any previous experience in Hawaii's politics. Every other gentleman that's running in a race has been in part of Hawaii's politics in some way, they perform. But I have lived a life of service. So, I was born and raised in Kailua. I graduated from the University of Kailua after high school. I'm a nine eleven kid, so I enlisted. I spent eight years in the Army. The entire time as an infantryman, three of those years were deployed to Iraq. Came home. I had volunteered to go to Afghanistan in two thousand and nine. Met my wife at Alamoana on a Monday night, like you're supposed to, and she convinced me to stay home. Probably the best choice that I ever made. Got out of the service, and we moved into a small studio apartment in Moliili. So, initially, I had gone to school for kinesiology, thinking that I was going to be a physical therapist. But it doesn't, I had my first experience with Honolulu homelessness. Fast forward a couple of years later, I went to school and finished my bachelor's degree in psychology, my master's in psychology, focusing on early childhood development and the markers along the way that lead to people into deviant behavior. So, how does one become a drug addict? How does one become homeless? For the last decade, I've been serving in our streets as a social worker. Just in the last two weeks, I actually got five individuals from your area off the streets and into shelters. One from over here on Peapoy by the freeway, three over here at Thomas Square, and then two from, one, two, oh, six, two from Alamoana. So, I'm in the streets every day doing street outreach, meeting people where they're at, getting them connected with services, and trying to make a difference because I know crime and homelessness is the key issues that are affecting our district, and it's affecting everyone's districts. So, everybody who's here today is all being impacted by homelessness. It's all being impacted by crime. And those two don't necessarily correlate, but when they do, oftentimes, the homeless are usually to blame. So, I'm an advocate for them, but I also want to see substantial changes so that we have a better quality of life here in Honolulu.
Thank you. And last, we have Speaker Scott Psyki online.
Thanks. Thanks, Shirley. Thanks to Shirley and all the members of the Neighborhood Board for sponsoring and organizing this forum. I'm sorry, I was supposed, I was planning to be there in person, but I am totally under the weather, so I will probably be packing away during this forum. So, I apologize for that in advance. I am currently the State Representative for District Twenty-Five, which includes Alamoana, Kaka'ako, Sharon, and a portion of downtown. And I've been the representative of this district since two thousand and thirteen. Just for, just briefly, I did, I grew up in Kailua. I went to a public school in Kailua. I graduated from HB and the UH with BA and a JD. So, as I mentioned, I began representing Kaka'ako in two thousand and thirteen, Alamoana-Kaka'ako in two thousand and thirteen. And, you know, I cut my teeth on the HCD issue with Sharon Moriwaki because there was a community movement at that time to reform the HCD. And that was what I worked on in my first year representing this district. And what I took away from that, and what I really learned and saw, was the importance of us forming a partnership, forming partnerships to get things done. And in that case, we had a partnership with the community and other leaders, and we're successful in enacting reforms, which still stand today. But, you know, we've continued to do that over the years, and I'm so proud to have worked with my colleagues in the legislature, as well as the city council, the governor, the mayor, and the state and city departments that have worked with us on issues that are important to our community. I want to give you a couple of examples. The first is the McKinley High School crosswalk. After that tragic incident in February two thousand and twenty-three, we worked together to change that area within one month. We installed speed humps, a red light camera. We started work on the left turn signal. And we also enacted legislation to enhance the penalty for repeat unlicensed drivers. The second example is Kaka'ako roads. This issue has been in limbo since the year nineteen oh three. These, the Kaka'ako roads have the ownership of the.
Thank you, Speaker Psyki.
Thank you. Okay.
Appreciate that intro. As mentioned earlier, you have up to a minute and thirty seconds to answer each question, and each question was devised by our Neighborhood Board. Each question will be asked to all of you. If you don't remember the questions, as we are going down a list of ten candidates, please feel free to ask it again, so we can repeat it. With that being said, we have Member Farinias for your first question.
Thank you, Chair. Climate change significantly impacts coastal rising tides. Marine life, and we're experiencing the increase of invasive species that are destroying both native and non-native flora and fauna. It is also one of the biggest issues our district faces because we're so close to the ocean and we're so vulnerable to it. What are your short and long-term plans for our district to protect the environment and address sea level rise?
Thank you. First person up is Scott Nishimoto.
Thank you. Well, I've worked on this issue a lot. I've been in the legislature, going door to door the past nine months. The thing that comes up the most in regard to climate change. Hello? Okay. The thing that comes up most when I talk to my neighbors about climate change is the Aloe Aie Canal project, the core of engineers project. And there's been a lot of feedback about it. I think there's a lot that needs to be done with that project. People are not totally satisfied, but I think that project is one of the biggest things that we can do to safeguard not only Waikiki, but all along the whole aquifer. So, that's what probably comes up the most when we talk about climate change in our district. From Manoa to Palolo to my current district in Makali Moliili, that's pretty much what people have concerns about.
Thank you. Brendan Schultz.
Yes. So, unfortunately, oftentimes, this issue gets sidelined because it appears to be a little bit more far out than pressing issues that we see visibly every single day in the district. I think as far as developing a county-level plan for sea level rise, we will need to liaise with not only the state government, but also the federal government in developing that plan. One of the benefits of this district being urban is that we can bring in a lot of resources into the district from the federal government and the state government, just because the population per a square mile is so high in order to ensure that there's continuity within our community. Unfortunately, as the sea level rises throughout our state and many other places across the world, there's going to be very tough decisions as far as which communities are relocated and which communities are maintained in their particular geographic location. And so, for our district, there's no option to move all of the skyscrapers that we see all around us. So, fortunately, we'll be able to bring in a sizable number of resources. And then also, forward-thinking, unfortunately, on a range of issues, the city council has been very reactive in recent years. But through forward-thinking and forward-planning, we can develop solutions ahead of time. That way, we will avoid instituting emergency measures once the sea level does rise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Scott Psyki.
Thank you. So, sea level rise is of particular concern to the Kaka'ako area because, you know, at one time, a hundred years ago, Kaka'ako was underwater. The sea level rose up to the Oahu Street area, Kaka'ako Makai, where the waterfront park is, was the ocean. There was no land there. It's man-made. It was filled with material from the Honolulu Harbor dredging. A few years ago, Senator Moriwaki and I worked on legislation in anticipation of sea level rise. And this legislation requires HCD, which is responsible for the planning of Kaka'ako, to incorporate sea level rise analysis when development permits come to the board for action. So, that law was approved, and it is in effect, and sea level rise is now under consideration for the Kaka'ako area.
Thank you. Kim Kokou Iwamoto.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I should sound, yes. So, what causes sea level rise is global warming. What causes global warming is an overproduction of carbon emissions. One of the, so what we need to obviously do to address a very local problem, which is in the Kaka'ako area near the waterfront, pushing inland, is to address our over-reliance on fossil fuels, and that's happening on the state level. Unfortunately, my opponent has introduced a bill in a previous recent session that would have allowed for one of our largest oil refiners to receive tax credits, basically subsidizing our reliance on fossil fuels, and that would have been to Par, who operates out of a free trade zone. And, you know, there was a whistleblower who called that out. And so, it's one thing to talk about what we're experiencing here. It's another thing to actually implement policies on a statewide level that addresses these kinds of backwards. We're moving, that policy would have moved us backwards. We should be giving more subsidies to alternative to fossil fuels. We should be investing in, you know, wind, obviously, and solar and other mechanisms to move us away from carbon, producing more carbon. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian Tam.
Thank you. I think the, I think the thing that we need to do is acknowledge that climate change is real, and it's sad that many members of Congress don't acknowledge that. Many of our federal funds to tackle climate change actually does come from the federal government, too. So, I'm very fortunate to have the opportunity to work with Senator Moriwaki, at least in our district area, to work with the UHC grant to create a Waikiki master plan to look at what Waikiki will look like years into the future. And we've solicited a lot of community input, and I think that was the main step that we need to take to ensure that our community is heard. Outside of that, when we think long-term wise, we really have to invest in clean energy. I really believe that this is an economic engine that we can, you know, really invest in because untapped. To name one, you know, land reclamation. We continue to pour, you know, CIP funds, thank you for that, into the Waikiki Beach area for sand replenishment. That's the motion of taking sand from, that has drifted out into the sea and bringing it back on the shore, and that's very expensive. If we are able to diversify our economy and tap into this green energy goals, I think that, you know, we can play a major part in tackling climate change worldwide.
Thank you. Pat McCain.
Thank you. One of the things that I've done in my recent past was I worked for the Waikiki Improvement Association. And one of their primary objectives is to fix Waikiki Beach. And the Department of Land and Natural Resources has been working on an environmental impact statement for ten years to fix Waikiki Beach. They've used the best scientists on planet Earth, and they've studied it to death. And, but yet, the Board of Land and Natural Resources will not give the Department of Land and Natural Resources an EIS to fix world-famous Waikiki Beach. If we can't, if we don't have the will to that, I don't know how we're gonna be able to do anything else. And I think the science suggests that sea level rise is gonna be about a foot in twenty years, if it doesn't happen overnight. So, you know, to the degree we can light a fire under the Board of Land and Natural Resources and get them to do it, they have said, "Oh, we're moving away from science-based decision-making, and we're moving towards more of a community collaboration." Well, they've done ten years of following the law, and to get up and then decide, "Oh, we don't want to do it." I, you know, I just think that we gotta change our mindset and move forward on things. Thank you.
Thank you. Zekiko Olds.
So, these are some tough acts to follow. So, just to reiterate what was said, so global warming is a national crisis. So, what we do here as state representatives, what we do here as state senators, what we do here as city council people, only really impacts us here locally. We really need to get a grasp of this internationally, and that takes a lot of pressure from our federal counterparts. But here locally, in our district, District Twenty-three, one of the big things that people are concerned about is flooding. So, our entire district is in a flood zone. And with the flood mediation that's been going on with Army Corps of Engineers, it's been a kind of a cloudy situation for a lot of the people in the district. And one of my buddies is on that team, and he basically said, "You know, I'm not quite sure why we're putting up these walls when we're living on an island." So, if you put up walls along these canals, if sea level does rise a foot in twenty years, they're not gonna stop it from getting into your neighborhoods. So, I think we need to have a very comprehensive approach to addressing this island and statewide, more so than just what we see with Army Corps of Engineers' current plans. And with some of the green projects that we see, you know, we'll have our impact. We'll never safari economy by having green technology here that we can get off of fossil fuels, but we really need to push for this on an international level.
Thank you. Ian Ross.
When we, I think about the way that we can push on an international level, I think it's as moral leaders, people who really try to take on the scale of this issue of global warming. And we've done this before. Here in Hawaii, taking on the twenty forty-five goal of a hundred percent renewable energy led to a cascade of communities all across the world trying to take on similar standards. Now, the hard part, actually implementing it, and it is very difficult. And when I think about flooding concerns, I think about House District Twenty-three, Moliili, Makali, Makiki, Alamoana, portions of Kapahulu. Having walked it twice and gone to all these doors, I can tell you it's a very flat area. And by looking at the Army Corps of Engineers' Aloe Aie Flood Mitigation Plan, I can, I know that this is a flood-prone area that can really potentially face catastrophic damages in the coming fifty or a hundred years. So, this is very deadly serious for our district. So, what I would like to do is take Sierra, a global role, because when we do, we can inspire others. I think that's very, very important. And, you know, as the candidate in this race who's proudly endorsed by the Sierra Club, I think we're gonna have to work on local levels. We're gonna take it on this international standard. And I'll just add, as a Neighborhood Board Chair, you know, I've done my best to weigh in on environmental concerns and community concerns on the Aloe Aie Flood Mitigation Project and also the Aloe Aie Canal Bridge. And I think these are important parts of this larger picture.
Thank you. Sharon Moriwaki.
These are all really complex.
These are all really complex issues. The last three years, I've been working with the University of Hawaii. This from Chip Fletcher's group that's looking at being three feet underwater. These are all macro studies. What we've done is how do we bring that? As Rep Tam says, we're bringing it down to the community and saying, what do we do about it? And JD was involved with this, looking at what can we envision for the future of Waikiki? It's one of the lowest level coastal communities. So is Kakaako. These are real concerns, managed retreat. These are real concerns. And what do we do about it for the future? How do we plan forward for our residents and businesses? And so part of the effort now is looking at what do we do, planning forward and moving backwards? What do we do today for tomorrow and future generations? And it's really important for all of us to get more involved in knowing the science, in knowing the impacts, and really trying to plan forward. And we can put resources into a plan. And so with Rep Psyki, we've been looking at Kakaako Makai. It's also a low coastal area. And we cannot build high-rise condos on that toxic landfill. And we have to protect the land. We have to protect what we have and plan forward.
Thank you. And lastly, Shataro Devs.
That's a good question. But it is sad seeing Waikiki Beach. You know, you used to be able to run all the way down without bumping into anyone. Now you're lucky if you could run one foot without hitting anything. Short-term goal, as Rep Tam said, is to acknowledge that climate change is real, and it very much is. The only fix I, you know, long-term fix that I see is just the renewable energy, kind of getting, finding more land for more solar panels and trying to, you know... You can't just build more solar panels, right? That doesn't always help. You need to find environmentally friendly materials for solar panels because solar panels do create a lot of waste after it breaks. A lot of the lifespan of solar panels is generally 10 to 15 years, and then it deteriorates. And, you know, our goal is to really find efficient materials, build better solar panels, and place more all around the island. Other than that, I don't, I don't see any other long-term issue that's feasible. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question, which will be read by Member Lynn Barry Mariano.
Good evening, everyone. Our neighborhood board continues to stress the importance of city and county and state to work together to fix and resolve the emergency repairs such as water main breaks, power grids, shortage of first responders, and many other types of concerns that we have. Often, we hear talk of what's going on to be done, but what seems to be no action. If elected, what will you do within your first 100 days in office to begin fixing this concern expressed by our constituents? Thank you.
Thank you, Member Mariano. This first question goes to Ian Ross.
That's a very good question. Thank you very much for it. You know, working together is a really critical thing that every legislator needs to do. And in the State House, the job is count to 26. That's the majority out of 51 members in the State House. And it's also work with people in other chambers and it's work with other area legislators. I'm honored to have counterpart Representative Adrian Tam and Senator Sharon Moriwaki, also outgoing council member Calvin Seay, and Councilmember Tyler DeSantis-Tam. And I've earned that support by working collaboratively to solve issues from Kipuna issues to local community issues. And that's how I've been able to be an effective community leader. Now, in the first 100 days, that's a very good question. I would say the outgoing Representative Scott Nishimoto, one of the things I admire most about him is as Chair for CIP. He has ensured that our district, when there is a major concern for funding, has been able to find that funding. And this is going to be a part of the big shoes he's leaving behind. So I'm going to take very seriously hitting the ground running, working with the Finance Committee, working with whoever replaces him as CIP Chair to make sure our district gets this vital funding and is able to continue to make sure our district's up and running. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ikaike Olds.
So Ian summed it up pretty well, just right off the bat. You have to work in collaboration with the other entities that are in the House. So one thing for me is, when I was in the military, we learned two things. One, how to take charge and take initiative in the absence of orders. And the second one is to work as a team. You can't complete the mission if you're working as an individual. So with that, I was instilled with the ability to be able to keep doors open, keep conversations going. So a big thing for me within the first 100 days is really... Like you said before, I'm new to politics. And I would really need to pay attention to the leadership that's inside the House and really pay attention to what I need to do to be a successful legislator. So my primary focus again is crime and homelessness, public safety. And there's a lot of state legislators who have already come out to support... Because in their own districts, they're already dealing with these issues. And they're looking to me to be able to bring some insight so that they can help address the issues within their own communities.
Thank you. Pat McCain.
I think that I'd like to revisit the question, if I may, because I thought it had to do with city and state collaboration.
That's correct. You want me to repeat the question?
Yes, please, if you would.
Our neighborhood board continues to stress the importance of city, county, and state to work together to fix and resolve the emergency repairs such as water main breaks, power grids, shortages of first responders, and others. Often, we only hear talk of what's going to be done, but what seems to be no action. If elected, what will you do within your first 100 days in office to begin fixing this concern expressed by our constituents?
Okay, thank you. I'm old enough to remember when the city and the state were like third-world countries fighting a border war. I can remember when Frank Fossey was around, and he never went to the legislature. And the city, they were just separate entities and fought all the time. So recently, I've reflected that we're way better off than we used to be. However, as I drive around and I look at all the construction everywhere, and you never know whether it's city or state. And I used to be a deputy director of the Department of Transportation. It has occurred to me to talk to Ed, the director, and say, Ed, then where you coordinate with the city so that we're not all blocking every road in Honolulu at the same time? Because I don't know if they do that. If they have like a map or something where they can say, we're doing this and they're doing that, so let's not cut the whole thing in half. So that has occurred to me recently to, you know, try to get it so that there is more coordination with regard to the traffic mess. I hope I answered your question. I tried.
Thank you. Shataro Devs.
Currently, I think the state and county, or city and county in the state, work pretty well together. Even through public forums, it's kind of a good way for both sides to engage with each other. I think the main thing is to kind of... More civic engagement is kind of one of my pushes, as well as teaching and kind of educating the public more about the process. Because it is pretty hard. I didn't know anything about it until I started at the Capitol. And I can see why it's so hard. You know, you click on government websites, and it takes you there, there. You don't even know where you're at anymore. So it's really making it easier for people to find proper channels and, you know, finding the right legislators, finding what issue is what, if it's city or state, you know. The only thing is that, you know, even I didn't know who my representative or senator was when I was younger, trying to get a little more engaged in the community. So, you know, we just have to kind of educate more people. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Moriwaki.
I think that's a really good question. It's all about enforcement. You know, the legislators can appropriate money. We can also take away money if you're not doing your job. We pass bills. But once it gets past us and it goes into play in administration, what we do as legislators is call upon the city, the Department of Transportation Services, the Department of Transportation, the... Can we work together, like the crosswalk that Speaker talked about? Let's pull ourselves together. And when you see that agencies work together, then you see things happening. And I think the partnerships are really, really critical, both from the legislative side and the administrative side. And the community coming to us and working together, it's all of our community problems. So I think we can make a difference.
Thank you. Next, Kim Kokoyomoto.
Thank you. I want to echo what Senator Moriwaki said. It's the community that makes the difference. A perfect example is, you know, I did a mailer that I mailed out. Well, first it starts with, I did a sidewalk talk in front of a building. And one of the residents at that building said, we've got to fix Queen Street. Can you spread the word? Can you get it out there that we have to do something about Queen Street? It's not safe. Everyone, especially from, you know, Whole Foods to Ward, that area specifically, the pedestrians, people are pushing their baby carriages, the bicyclists. Everyone's having a problem, the flooding. Everyone knows about it, but somehow we've normalized it. So suddenly, they wanted to, they asked me to give voice to this issue. And I did in a mailer. I also did a video that became a viral video about the Wild, Wild West of Queen Street. Many people have seen it. It actually got our legislative leaders and the city together. And suddenly, right before our ballots came into our mailbox, they announced they're going to fix Queen Street. Amazing! The timing was impeccable. But just like the 2022 promises that Speaker Psyki made to the Ward Village moms and to the dog park owners, that he promised a dog park, he promised to fix and put back the sidewalk leading to Kaulanu Park, and it's still not done. He promised blinky lights, a safe crosswalk. It's still not done two years later.
Thank you, Kim Kokoyomoto. Scott Psyki.
Thanks, Charlie. So, you know, I'm going to continue to do what I have been doing for the past few years. Because, and I've said this publicly, that the working relationship between the state and the city have never been better. I've never seen it better than it is now. And it has paid off for our community. And I'm going to continue to work to foster that relationship. And we've seen it already in a couple of situations. The first was, as I mentioned earlier, the McIlley Crosswalk, where the state came in and worked with the city to install improvements, even though that was a county road. It was not the state's jurisdiction to do that. And the state helped to fund the bill for that. The second area was on Kakaako roads. And this issue has been in the making for years and years and years. And it specifically began 10 years ago in 2014, when a lawsuit was filed to clear title of the roads because those roads were in limbo. The ownership was not clear. We finally won in the lawsuit with the Attorney General's assistance. The court declared that the city is the owner of those roads. It's been 10 years, and the city has agreed to work with the State Department of Transportation to begin improving those roads. So I'm going to continue to work with the state DOT and the City Transportation Department to make these improvements in Kakaako.
Thank you. Brendan Schultz.
So one of the nice things about city and county government is it's sort of the tactical arm of government. It's where the rubber meets the road and where elected officials have to get things done, or else it's very noticeable that things aren't getting done on behalf of constituents. And within the first 100 days, one of the biggest issues we have with Honolulu government is staffing, that there's vacancies across every single city department. And imagine going to a restaurant and half the cooks, half the waitstaff aren't there. You wouldn't have a good dining experience. Similarly, us residents of Honolulu aren't having... With our municipal government, because of those vacancies, the municipal government just can't deliver the services that needs to. The biggest way we solve that is by increasing wages. So entry-level positions in city government, whether it be in the Fire Department, the Police Department, or Ocean Safety, wherever, they do not pay a living wage. So we need to increase entry-level wages to attract qualified candidates to municipal government. Also, within the first 100 days, I would meet with all of the elected officials at the fellow county level, state level, and potentially the federal level, as well as administrative officials at the state and county level in order to form the partnerships needed to deliver results on behalf of constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Nishimoto.
Thank you. Ultimately, what this issue comes down to is funding. And it's something that I have made a conscious effort in my legislative career to be on the Finance Committee in the State House. This past year, Senator Moriwaki and I, we ran the CIP Committee for the Senate, or for the Senate, the House. I made a conscious effort to spend the bulk of my career on the Finance Committee. And that's so that I could bring home tangible funds for projects in our district. Because ultimately, someone's got to pay for this stuff. And it's, I've always felt like it's legislators' jobs to bring money home to their districts to pay for these things. So in the past 10 years alone, I've brought 300 million, over 300 million, to our district. It is what I feel... It is what will be my emphasis to bring funding to our council district for issues like the streets in Kakaako. It's gone 10 years without renovations because of the court fight. Someone's got to pay for that. And I know if I'm elected, it will be my job in the council to get that money. And that's what I intend to do. And I have a proven track record of getting funds for our district.
Thank you. Adrian Tam.
Thank you. When I first got elected, I knew that my office was going to get many constituent concerns. And the first thing I do when I get one is to identify whether it's a city or a state jurisdiction. And if it's a state jurisdiction, I find out who do I call to fix this and resolve this. And if it's a city, I contact my city council member, and I work with whoever in the mayor's office that handles this as well. And we were able to address these constituents' concerns working at a state and city partnership level. But it's not just state and city. It's also our federal counterparts. So one example is that we had a... My district includes Fort Terusi, which is federal land. And, you know, there was an issue with a dog owner and one of their employees. You know, we were able to contact our federal counterparts and work something out with them. It's also us working with the nonprofits in our communities, whether it's getting them the grant money they need to run some of the programs to help improve our neighborhoods. For myself and this district is Waikiki Community Center, where they wanted to build an industrial kitchen to help their seniors. Or it's the Waikiki Business Improvement Association so that they can run a different type of Aloha ambassadors program that addresses houselessness. We were able to get that funds because of advocates and because of the advocacy in the legislature that I was able to bring so that, you know, we can run these programs and benefit our communities.
Moving on to the third question, which will be asked by Member Laurie Farinaz.
Local residents are struggling to get by, and the middle class is disappearing. How can you help working families and the middle class who are having great difficulties to continue living in Hawaii and afford and attain affordable housing?
Thank you. Let's start with the candidates for House District 25. Scott Psyki.
Okay, thanks, Charlie. So cost of living was turned out to have been the most pressing issue that we worked on at the legislature, the most prioritized issue that we worked on at the legislature this year. It began with the cut in the state income tax. We approved the largest income tax cut rate cut in history, in the Hawaii's history. In the next seven years, as this is phased in, you will see many, many families paying 50% less in taxes. Those at the lower brackets will probably pay zero tax or receive a refund because they'll still be eligible for tax credits, like their income tax credit. So tax relief was a big, big priority for the legislature. We know that people are paying too much in taxes, and we wanted to lift that burden from them. The second area was on housing. We passed two bills to make an attempt to create more housing inventory in our state by facilitating the city's zoning of residential areas to allow for more AD development. We believe, we believe and really felt that we need more capacity, we need more inventory to bring down housing costs and to provide sufficient inventory for Hawaii's families. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Kokouyimoto.
So 40% of private land in Hawaii is owned by out of state investors. This has left us with over 76,000 empty homes across the state. 76,000. We only have 6,000 homeless people, just to keep it in perspective. One of the things that I've, solutions that I've been working on, and I know the, the city and county of Honolulu issued a study on empty homes. And for the county, it would be empty home tax. For the state, what we need is an empty home surcharge. What this would do would, we would be able to raise funds. And let me explain why we are justified in collecting a surcharge. Those of us who live in our units in the district, we leave our units, we go to the grocery store, we go to our favorite restaurant. Some of us get our nails done. We're paying G E T. We are, we're paying, we're creating, we're spending money which creates jobs, right? Like a dishwasher, a server. People are paying income tax, G E T income tax. We, by spending money in our district, we are generating state revenue, right? These investors from out of state, they are profiting by the buying and selling of property, but they're not contributing. When they keep their units empty, they're not contributing to the economic vitality, to our state revenue. What we need to do is, is claim that, claim that revenue and use that money for vouchers to keep our kapuna housed. And to also, this policy would, would actually encourage landowners to rent to local families so they don't have to go to Vegas.
Thank you. Adrian Tam.
You know, like I mentioned in my intro, housing continues to be a main focus of mine. For me, you know, I view housing in terms of, like, just like economics. When demand is high as it is right now and supply is low, what do you do? You increase supply. This past year, we passed one bill that I think that is going to really change the game, which is we made it easier for commercial buildings to basically convert them to mixed use residential. And we've seen after the pandemic, many of our businesses are actually closing their physical locations for more at home type of work. And that leaves a lot of these commercial buildings empty. So what do we do? The best ways to help them convert them into residential to house more of our people. I think that, you know, moving forward, we need to do more. I would love to see us continue to build more housing to house our people. And, and that will continue to be my priority if reelected. Thank you.
Thank you. For Senate District 12, Sharon Murawaki.
I think that we need to look at affordable housing. We're leaving, people are leaving the state in droves because we don't have the housing. So the T R O, T R O, the S T Rs, the transit, what am I thinking? Oh, okay. This is for the short term. We have allowed now the counties to start looking at how can we get more of the inventory so people can actually live here? And it's not for investment, but for residence. The other is looking at what we've passed, the tax cut. It's also the G E T tax for those people who are on Medicare, Medicaid, or TRICARE, so that now the docs who are outside of the hospitals don't have to pay the tax if they are actually helping people who are on these beneficiaries on these programs. So it will expand the pool of docs and dentists who serve those people who are vulnerable, who need help and haven't been able to get access. So those are areas that we are looking at in terms of continuing to provide those kinds of services and help, to help people to stay afloat and also keep more money in their, in their pocketbooks.
Thank you. Shetaro Dabs.
Could I get the question one more time?
Absolutely.
Just so I can.
Local residents are struggling to get by and the middle class is disappearing. How can you help working families and the middle class who are having great difficulties to continue to live in Hawaii and to attain affordable housing?
Okay, thank you. One of the main concerns I am pushing for is diversifying our economy. Tourism will always be our number one moneymaker. But that doesn't, it doesn't hurt to diversify and go into other sectors. One push I am advocating for is incentivizing more people to open up small businesses, kind of offering low interest loans and kind of helping people develop more businesses. But a preventative idea I had was pushing financial literacy in schools. When I was 16, I got kicked out. I had no idea how to spend my money properly. I had to work multiple jobs just to get by. And eventually I studied up, learned how to do finances, and it got a little easier to get by. I, Hawaii is number one in highest credit card debt, consumer debt in the nation, we're at 14,000 average per person. And the cost of living is very high and it makes sense that our consumer debt rises with that. But like I said, financial literacy is a big push and it would help a lot of young people not make mistakes when it comes to opening credit cards at 18. Because, you know, when you're young, it's hard to, you know, you open a credit card, you have $5,000. Oh, let's just spend it, spend it, spend it. And that was one of the mistakes I did as a kid.
Thank you.
I hope to push that.
For House District 23, Kaiko Olds.
Again, we're following some tough acts here. You know, we, we have to build more housing and we have to diversify our economy. I think everybody up here is going to be talking about that. So I'd like to actually take us a little bit on a different tangent. That's, it's based off of my experience working in my role. So one thing that we don't talk about is our Micronesian population. So here in urban core Honolulu, we have a substantial Micronesian population. Now, I'm not sure when the last time anybody on this panel has been to one of the public housings that we have. I was just at K P T this afternoon, helping a Chiquis family try not to get evicted from their unit. So one thing that is prevalent here in urban core Honolulu is the Micronesian population is failing to acculturate. And what is happening is they're filling up a lot of our low income housing. So if you go down to Mayor Rights, if you go down to K P T, Camp 4 Housing, Palau Valley Homes, you're going to see that up to 50 plus percent of these units are being occupied by Kofa residents. Now, this isn't a dig on them. It's a dig that we tend to see when, when immigrant populations come into the United States, it tends to take between two and three generations for the descendants to acculturate. But right now, what we're seeing is a group of people who are failing to acculturate. And that has a lot to do with different cultures, different societal values, lower education, barriers. But what we're also seeing is they don't really have a lot of support. They get a lot of hate from the community. And within the Kaka'ako Alamoana neighborhoods, a lot of your really low income apartments are being filled by Kofa residents. It's the same.
Thank you. I, I think I remember the question. This is our, our second forum today and we kind of went over this, this, this topic. And we, this morning, we talked about how can we find ways to make sure that the housing that we have is filled with people who are living in it? You know, and, and we all kind of agreed that it's a good idea to, to stick it to the people that don't live here, you know, because they're, they're taking up our housing. And it, and it used to be that the tourist industry was in Waikiki. Well, now it's in Kailua and everywhere else, you know? And so I'm, I'm for that. I'm for eliminating the Airbnb stuff altogether. And another area that, that I always come back to is the Hawaii Public Housing Authority. I would recommend that, that we audit that place. And I have a friend of mine that, that I went to college with there and he's a budget analyst. And his job is to tell them when they're spending money the wrong way. And they've been trying to kill him for 10 years. And he came, you know, was in Ways and Means, you know, for a dozen years. So I really recommend that we look at the Hawaii Public Housing Authority. You've got people that are paying themselves huge money, a dollar less than the governor, with hardly any oversight. So that's where I think we got to look.
Thank you, Pat McCain. And Ian Ross.
Thank you. The question being, how do we help local families? I think the first thing we need to do is recognize that this is a crisis. It's a crisis for families who are sitting down at the table and trying to figure out their budget for the month and trying to figure out if they still have a future in the state. And it's becoming a crisis for the broader society. Really briefly, in 2021 and 2022, if you calculate the outgoing migration from the state alone, it's 67,000 people. You know, I was born here in Oahu. I've lived and called this community home for, for 12 years now. But I grew up on Kauai. And when I was growing up on Kauai, that was the population of the entire island. And that just left in a period of two years. And when we look at the broader economic implications of this, one thing to keep in mind is this has led to estimated hundreds of millions of dollars in decreased state revenue. This revenue being exactly the type of thing we need to pay for all the ideas you're hearing here today. And it's evaporating very quickly. So we need to take decisive action. When it comes to housing, there's two real drivers. And one, I think has been articulated very well. It's the international demand, a different market that doesn't correspond to how much money people make here. And this has led to today, only one in five families would even qualify for a mortgage for the median home here. That means even if you have a down payment, even if you say you couldn't get a mortgage, that's completely not sustainable. The other one is the cost of land. And that's why we need to look at things like social housing, supporting teacher housing based on U H Manoa, Manoa's model, and supporting the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. These things being able to build on existing lands can dramatically drive down the costs and keep more of our local families here.
Next, we have our council member candidate, Scott Nishimoto.
Thank you. So I was walking door to door in Manoa and I, I pounded on this lady's door. She answered. And she said, you know, I really want my son to live with me, my son and his family. They can't really afford the rent that they're paying right now. So I want them to move in with me. But I've been waiting for D P P to approve the renovations that I have to make for him to live with me for two years. So they've been waiting two years for their permits from D P P. The thing that we can do immediately in the city council is reform D P P. It should not be taking two years for a kapuna in Manoa to get renovations okayed for her house so that her son can live with her. It, it's something we can do immediately. We can do it by giving them more resources for staffing and giving them more resources to update their technology. It's going to make a world of difference. Now, the current administration has made a lot of strides with D P P, but there's still so much we can do. It's heartbreaking when you hear from constituents who want their, their keiki to live with them and they can't do it because they can't get a permit.
Thank you. And lastly, Brendan Schultz.
So Honolulu has become the least expensive hedge fund in the entire world. And what I mean by that is that if you are very wealthy, you know, let's say you're a tech entrepreneur in the Bay Area and you buy one of these multi tens of million dollar waterfront condos in Kaka'ako, you're going to be paying the city about 1% property tax rate, which is far less than how much you would pay a Wall Street firm to manage your money. So we need to zoom out a little bit and ask ourselves, what is the fundamental reason why we have this housing shortage in the first place? And even examining the word housing shortage, like was previously mentioned, we don't have a housing shortage. On this island, we have 35,000 empty units right now that could be filled by local families. So we need to reexamine the property tax structure. I want to lower property taxes on homes that are owner occupied and raise property taxes on outside investors while adding an empty home surcharge. This is very controversial. It ruffles a lot of feathers, especially with the Board of Realtors, who tend to profit a little bit off of the current system. But it's something that needs to be done. It's going to make the cost of living more affordable for local working families. And even if we aren't able to convince very wealthy people to rent out their units to not pay for that surcharge, we can use the money that's brought in to fund affordable housing initiatives and fill the vacancies that we need to do at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to our fourth question, which will be asked by a member.
Great questions, great answers. In regards to the increase of unsightly graffiti, possible gang tags throughout Alamoana, Kaka'ako, Waikiki, Makiki, and if you travel around the state, around the island, you'll see more. Within your first 100 days in office, what is your plan to work with the city and state government to stop the unsightly activity and provide the city and county, state law enforcement officers, including the judicial branch, with proper enforcement tools needed to increase the penalties and/or incarceration of individuals or groups who continually deface or show no concern for private or public properties?
Thank you. Let's start with our Senate candidate, Shetaro Dabs.
Thank you for the question. Being in Waikiki, we do see a little bit of graffiti, or quite a bit of graffiti. And, sorry, give me one second, graffiti. Could I get that question one more time?
Absolutely.
I just blanked.
Answer the question. No, I'm just joking. In regards to the increase of unsightly graffiti and possible gang tags throughout Alamoana, Kaka'ako, Waikiki, and Makiki, and other places around the island of Oahu, within your first 100 days in office, what is your plan to work with the city and state government to stop the unsightly activity and provide the city, county, and state law enforcement officers, including the judicial branch, with the proper enforcement tools needed to increase the penalties and/or incarcerate individuals or groups who continually deface and show no concerns for private and public properties?
One more time? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I'll do it backwards.
Thank you. When it comes to increasing, or increasing fines or penalties for it, I don't think that's the right way. I think the main issue is we're, I'm on the Waikiki Neighborhood Board and one of the things we heard was that we're down 360 cops. That, that's the deficit that we're in. So I don't think it's, you know, the lack of enforcing it. It's just, or it is the lack of enforcing that law. So we should work on, now, I actually talked to a couple of police officers on how to, you know, how do we incentivize more people to, you know, join the police force? And it's sort of, they've also the same thing about the pay. That's kind of the main issue, is that they don't get paid that much to start off with. You have to work 25 years and that's when, you know, that gets sorted, sorry. So it's trying to incentivize people to join the police academy is one nice step that we could do. Other than that, a lot of areas that do have graffiti are really dim, really dark. And that is also an issue. Or increasing, you know, lighting fixtures and all that could help deter people from, you know, putting up any type of graffiti or, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Murawaki.
I think that this is a longstanding problem. Part of, of the collaboration that's necessary is the police, as well as what the city, it's the city, so we're going to rely on our council members. But the police and the Department of Facilities Management, they clean up the mess. I talk with the police. We have to put trespass signs to be able to have people or have the police in force. So it really is working together, the community, the police, as well as the Department of Facilities Management. It's really at the, the county level. And the state can fund programs that are effective, but it really is the community taking back the community.
Thank you. For House District 25, Kim Kokouyimoto.
So one of the things that we know that deters graffiti is beautiful murals. I mean, look at Kaka'ako, there's so many gorgeous murals. No one's tagging the murals. Maybe what we should do is be more proactive about funding artists when there's abandoned property to say, hey, here's a space. Let's, let's give you some resources, which would be cheaper than incarcerating a young person who's tagging a building. I used to live in, I own property once upon a time in New York City. Our building, we had X amount of hours to take care of graffiti on our building, if anybody tagged, because we do know it's, it's contagious or it actually spreads graffiti. If you leave graffiti uncleaned or untreated. or it actually spreads graffiti, um, if you leave graffiti uncleaned or untreated. Um, so that, that's definitely something that we could do. We can put it on the landowner, the private person, or even a citizen group to go in and cover graffiti immediately. So those are two deterrents that I think are more effective than incarceration or fining somebody. And I don't know if, how easy it is to get spray paint. I don't know if it's locked behind a glass, if you need to get it at the register. I don't know if you can order it on Amazon. Um, but, you know, if it's aerosol, maybe you can't, I don't know. But, so addressing at a point of purchase might be a solution.
Thank you. Scott Seiki.
I agree with what Senator Morawaki, Moriwaki, uh, said. And I just want to add a couple of points to that. I think it's gonna be really important for us going forward to do a couple of things. The first is to support the Police Department, because the Police Department is the first, they're the first responder, and they're the ones who respond to the calls that come in about graffiti. We need to support their efforts at the community level. The second is to support our security watches, our neighborhood security watches. Uh, we have one in Alamoana, Kakaako, that walks every second and fourth Thursday of the month. And this group does look out for things like graffiti and reports them to the city for enforcement purposes. Um, I think it's really important that we support community-based efforts to create a presence in our neighborhood, but also to watch out for this kind of activity that is occurring. It's also important for residents to, you know, be aware that they can report graffiti to the city's 311 app. Uh, the 311 app is very effective, and the city's been very responsive to concerns that have been sent into them through that. Thank you.
Thank you. For House District 23, Pat McCain.
Okay, uh, I'm a, I'm a single dad. And, uh, uh, my daughter, you know, lives with her mom in, on Makahiki Street. And about 10 years ago, uh, there was a ugly, ugly graffiti right across the street from her. And I went over and asked the man, Alex, do you mind if I paint this ugly wall here? And he didn't mind. And I went to a billetad for humanity and got a couple gallons of paint, mixed them all together, and did it myself. And that was 10 years ago, and it hasn't been, uh, you know, defaced since then. So, uh, and I remember way back when, uh, a Winward council member used to carry paint cans in his trunk, and he would just get out and paint stuff. So, uh, you know, I don't know that, you know, I mean, if it bothers you and if it looks like you can reach it, uh, if the landowner will let you, go ahead and paint it over. And as far as paint cans, uh, another friend of mine had his son go to New York and got busted with a can of spray paint in the, in the middle of the night, and it was a serious offense, just having spray paint the can. You don't have to be caught doing anything but doing that. So, uh, don't be afraid to ask a landowner, a property owner, hey, do you mind if I paint over this thing? You know, because, you know, uh, oftentimes they'll give up. Anyway, I digress. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Ross.
Thank you very much. I would like to try to divide out two groups when we're talking about the graffiti. And, you know, the first one are a bunch of bored kids. And let's be serious about that. And I would separate that out a bit from, from the gangs. And I think on that front, like Iwamoto, I'm really reluctant to see, you know, incarceration or something like that is the primary tool that's going to stop that. Now, catching them more often, that's a great idea. The threat of actually caught is something that is a deterrent. But there's something else we can be looking at, and that's giving kids other things to do in our community. I recently took up the Boys and Girls Club of the McCully, Makiki area up on a tour and checked out their facility, heard about their concerns, what sort of CIP requests or GIA requests might be coming down the pipeline in the future. And it's really remarkable what they're doing there. And I have to say, if we just had several, a few more efforts of that scale, I think we'd see quite a bit less graffiti. Uh, the other one is supporting working families. What we were saying before is a crime prevention tool. Um, you know, making sure that people, both parents don't have to work three jobs so they're at home with their kids is a way that we decrease this. But the second one's more severe, when we're talking about gang activity. And I'm sick and tired of going out with Chair Kathleen Lee when there's a stabbing or a loss of life and talking on the news about how we have to shut down illegal game rooms in our community. There's 100 of them across Oahu, and this is something which is driving so much of the crime that we're seeing. It's not just graffiti, it's loss of life, it's serious crimes that are occurring, not just gambling. It's happening in our district. As I've been knocking the district, I've been reporting legal game rooms on 311, and three of them recently got raided just two blocks from where I live. And I'm gonna be very forward on this to make sure we have a safe community. Thank you very much.
And Ikai Kold.
Again, lots of fantastic ideas already coming through. So, you know, one thing that's really interesting, so just a couple of weeks ago, uh, I actually took video of somebody graffitiing the corner of King and University, uh, the old university shopping plaza where CAM schools is now developing. So he was doing it live in the act, middle of the day, the entire wall. And so I called HPD to follow the report, gave them the video, and essentially nothing happened. They're like, well, it's not enough to be able to, uh, to convict this person. So they basically let it go. So, one, yes, we do have to support HPD, but two, we also have to be able to make sure that actions have consequences. And that's a big thing for us. It's not to say that everybody needs to go to jail, because that really is not the answer. But what happens if we were able to catch this individual? Because I know for a fact HPD has, they know the people in their areas that are committing crimes. It's probably not their first rodeo. And so the officer that saw the video actually knew who the guy was. But the issue is not putting him in jail. What happens if we help him do a beautification project? I love Kim Kokko's, uh, recommendation to beautify the area. It'd be a beautiful mural on top of that wall, get CAM schools to be able to help support it. It'd make our community look a lot better. I love what Ian Ross said, we have to get the kids engaged. Yes, they're part of the, the groups that are going out and tagging, but my, my example kind of proves that it's, it's also adults. So, yes, we have to engage the community, we have to ensure the kids have something to do, but yes, we also have to make sure that actions have consequences.
Thank you. For Council District 5, Brendan Schultz.
So what we're talking about essentially with graffiti here is crime. And crime is much more a symptom of larger problems that we have here in Hawaii than a problem in and of itself. Um, so we should step up enforcement, but to only have an incarceration program to solve this issue would be like trying to deal with our brain drain by building a wall around the state. It wouldn't end up solving the underlying problems which have led to the issue to begin with. So my entire set of policy proposals, affordable housing, improving community safety. We think about community safety, the first thing that comes to mind is crime. The first response that comes to mind is increasing the officers on the beat. I do want to make sure that HPD doesn't have a staffing shortage, but I also want to make sure that vital city programs like CORE don't have a staffing shortage, that we put more social workers out on the street to deal with houseless individuals and people having public mental health episodes. And I also want to make sure that, you know, as an ordinary citizen, not having held political office previously, the greatest sort of criminal activity or corrupt activity I look up to in Hawaii is unfortunately that of our leaders, who accept multi-thousand-dollar donations, who I invite anyone to look at the notice of fundraisers in my race. I have not held any fundraisers. Um, I will not have backroom deals at private clubs asking for $4,000, $2,000, $1,000, or $500 donations, because the working family that I come from and the working families that I seek to represent in Honolulu Hala, I know can't afford that. So that's why I'm not accepting the pay increase, and that's why I'm not running my campaign in that way, because that's the real issue when it comes to corruption and criminality in Hawaii.
And Scott Nishimoto.
Thank you. Well, I definitely think that we're, we're talking about more than just graffiti. We're talking about crime and enforcement in general. And while I, I don't, um, think we should put people that, that tag buildings in jail, we do need to enforce the current laws. And we do need to support our police force. Um, they are woefully understaffed right now. They're having a hard time with recruitment and retention. And I am in favor of, of providing them the funds to be able to recruit and retain officers with the caveat that there's transparency on what they're doing with the money and how they're using it, and that they're showing results, tangible results. And, and that to me is, is, is what we need to be doing, because if we keep on this current path, we're just, it's a cyclical burnout. You have officers that are working 12, 14-hour shifts because we can't retain and recruit officers. Those officers get burned out and they leave. And then we have a bigger problem. So we really need to focus on recruitment and retention, and then make sure that we're getting the results we want from those officers. But, you know, a good point was brought up, um, about the community engagement part. Last week, I...
Tam.
I think everyone gave great answers to this, you know, whether it's enforcement to just a police presence, to a mural, to retention. But if you know, especially in my district, many of the graffiti is actually on abandoned buildings. Um, and it's gone really bad. So one of the things that we also should be focusing on is how do we reform the Department of Planning and Permitting, uh, whether it's to make sure that, you know, these property owners are upkeeping their property and their abandoned buildings, or trying to reform the permitting process so that they can begin work on making sure that their property is no longer abandoned. And, you know, something I read a while ago is that, you know, it's gotten so bad that our former mayor couldn't even get a permit for his kitchen remodeling. That's just how bad DPP is. And I think that if we were able to solve DPP, we would make inroads, like strong inroads, when it comes to graffiti.
Thank you, candidates. We have two questions left. And in the interest of time, since I mentioned that we were trying to get out of here by 8:30, we are going to allot one minute per person for the last two questions. And the fifth question will be asked by Member Lynn Barry Mariano.
Not fair. You want me to answer that question? These projects around Alamoana, Kakaako, you know, there's height exceptions. A lot of exception to policies. The current height restriction is 250 feet. But all of these exceptions have been coming up, up to 400 feet. Mixed use and a lot. Haven't been a lot for developers who have been building new condos and apartment structures in our neighborhood with the promise of affordable housing, which is often not affordable for local residents. What is your plan to stop the exceptions and the overdevelopment in the Alamoana, Kakaako area?
Thank you. Let's start with Adrian Tam.
Thank you. Um, you know, when it comes to height exceptions, I understand the sentiment about developers not promising. That's why I continue to support the construction of affordable housing. Um, and, you know, really utilizing, fixing our DPP so that we can address, um, uh, building permits and expediting them so that we can construct, you know, more affordable housing. Um, I think that when it comes to developers, I think the unfortunate thing is that there is like a demand for luxury. You know, people just consistently want to buy them. You know, and that's like, you know, I am in favor of like an empty homes tax. I'm in favor of, you know, trying to reform our conveyance tax so that, you know, we make sure that those who are investing in this pay like a fair amount so that we, as local residents, don't have to subsidize them.
Thank you. Uh, Senate candidate, Sharon Morawaki.
I agree. I think that we shouldn't have variances. Um, and they've been modified, uh, because of affordable housing. And the affordable housing, um, standard is not really affordable for residents. So I think that the city council, the planning commission needs to relook at what the standard for affordable housing, if we are going to give those kinds of exemptions.
Thank you. Shatara Davs.
Thank you. Um, pretty much what Representative Tam and Senator Moriwaki said, it's mostly just getting DPP to, what is it, trying to make DPP more efficient and to look back at, um, what is it? The, uh, rules and regulations for affordable housing and what falls under that category.
Thank you. For the council district candidates, Scott Nishimoto.
Thank you. So a lot of these projects that you're talking about are 201H projects. Um, my concern is that the community should be able to weigh in on these projects. And it's been my experience in my district that, um, the community has not, in some instances, had a chance to weigh in. Right now, it's 45 days that, that they have to weigh in. I think that's too short. Um, the past two years in the legislature, I introduced bills to increase that to 90 days so that the community has much more time to weigh in on it. Um, both years it passed the House. Um, unfortunately, it did not get through the Senate. Um, but, you know, I really think that the community needs to be heard when it comes to these projects. Um, people in the neighborhood board and people in the community need to be heard. So 45 days is much too short, I prefer 90.
Thank you. Brendan Schultz.
So, uh, the first part of the question about density, um, the urban core, for better or worse, is going to become more dense. That's just the population trends of Hawaii. We need to build housing to, to house our local working families. So density within the urban core is going to increase. There's a big question about how we manage that, though. If you travel to other places in the world, Tokyo, Paris, Barcelona, London, you'll see they're very dense cities, but they have a very good plan for how to manage that, very walkable, bikeable cities. Honolulu, the urban core, also very dense, not really walkable or bikeable at all. So how do we get cars off the street? How do we manage density in order to make a very livable city? We certainly can do that here. Much other places around the world that are far less wealthy, as we are, have done so as well. As far as affordable housing, a couple of years ago, I applied for an affordable housing project in Kakaako. It was the most bureaucratic, ridiculous process that I went through in my entire life. And, um, it doesn't really seem to benefit the people who it should. And so I support the construction more of affordable rentals as opposed to affordable units for ownership. It's just easier for working families who need support to get into a rental as opposed to a home that's gonna be constructed half a decade later.
Thank you. For House District 23, Ian Ross.
Thank you very much. Um, when I think about this, I think really about what it means to have truly affordable housing for local residents. One thing that's been starting to move on the city council level that I've been hearing about is more discussion about how to make sure the taxpayer supports only going to homes that will actually be affordable for local residents. So at the minimum, we're not subsidizing some of these homes that many of us are never gonna have the opportunity to ever afford. And I think a lot of this comes down to fairness. When I hear this question about these exemptions for buildings that then won't actually be affordable, I think there's this idea of being taken advantage of in our own home. And I think that's deeply unsettling for many people here, and they want to see actual progress and actual movement. Uh, one idea I heard discussed here that I absolutely support is from Rep. Nishimoto about changing the 45 days to the 90 days. As a five-year neighborhood board chair, I, I know the pain of virtually having no time to weigh in and then being criticized for not having all the facts when you've had one week to look at a report before it's on the agenda. Really slowing things down that one way would barely make a drop of difference in the overall time that it would take.
Thank you.
But I nod, so I know my time's up. Thank you.
Ikai Kold.
Make sure I have this one minute time. So I, I agree with what was already previously said with, uh, Rep. Scott Nishimoto and with Ian Ross. So it, it really should come down to the communities. And in, in our district, the, the truth of the matter is we're gonna be living in vertical communities. So high rises are gonna be the thing of our future to open up the possibility for housing. But the constituents that live in that area need to have a say. And I just want to mention what happened last year with Kool-Aid Place, a project that's very controversial in our district. Most people don't support it. And it was, it was brought up to our neighborhood board, and it was approved anyway. And at the end of the day, it's a Trojan horse, uh, affordable housing project where a two-bedroom is only 590 square feet, or 531,000. So it was able to get by because of, uh, certain people voting for it, but it should be the constituency making, making that call.
Thank you. And Pat McCain.
Okay, uh, I, I think the question was about Alamoana, Kakaako affordable housing.
But there's a height exception, because the TOD is 250. That's one of the... Because the TOD is two hundred and fifty, that's on the books. But there's always exceptions, then they build up to four hundred feet. But if a lot of developers who have been building new condos and apartment structures in our neighborhood with the promise of affordable housing, which is often not affordable for local residents. So what is your plan to stop the exceptions and overdevelopment in the Alamoana Kakaako area?
Okay. Okay. Well, as I've listened to other people answer the question, I've wondered, are we talking about HCDAs? Because HCDAs does whatever the hell they want. That's a creature of the state and that's authority that the state came down and took away from the city thirty, forty years ago. So it's hard to control HCDAs, you know. But the city has a lot more juice in absolutely. If it's not really affordable, I'd just let that land sit fallow. But we have to hold the line on the giveaways. And with HCDAs, you know, you know, I think that that's a tough one. They're all appointees and they're not gonna, you know, they're not up for election.
Thank you. And for House District Twenty-five, Scott Psyki.
Thanks. So, you know, I'll take a page from the Moriwaki Psyki playbook in twenty thirteen when we took on HCD reform. We did three things. The first was we imposed a statutory height limit in Kakaako. The limit is four hundred and thirty-five feet. Second, we required public hearings, contested case public hearings for permit applications for projects, as well as a separate hearing on the variance request. So the city holds separate hearings on variance requests for the public to weigh in on. And those are all public hearings. The third issue is our continued opposition to residential development at Kakaako Makai. Thank you.
Thank you. And
So this idea of public hearings doesn't really have quite the impact that they make us think we have. Just because you do a hearing, it doesn't stop a development, right? It's the people who are appointed. I mean, it's kind of follow the money. Because truly the developers are giving huge amounts of contributions. And some of the unions who build things are giving huge contributions, huge support to certain candidates. And I want to go back to this wow headline that Senator Moriwaki mentioned that got her, launched her career. What's crazy is that it's the thing that scared you is actually here now. So what happened? Now, I mean, seriously, I don't know what happened and I don't know if it happens over time. One of the solutions is a moratorium on building luxury until all of our affordable housing needs are met. And because we need to make sure that housing developers who want to build affordable can afford to build affordable. They can't afford to outbid luxury because sky's the limit. They bid for land, they bid for labor, and they bid for materials.
We are down to our last question of the evening, which will be asked by Member Farinaus. All right, your last question, it's rather short, but rather weighty. Corruption in government has been a big deal in Hawaii recently. What would you do to increase government accountability, transparency, and fairness in our civic process and elections? Thank you. Let's start with Kim Kokoyomoto.
Okay, well, one of the issues is, I mean, the broadest issue is pay to play. And I kind of referenced that, this idea that you follow the money. You see the influence huge donations have on elections. One of the things we need to do is limit the amount of money candidates can receive from anyone, including from the candidate themselves, from their family, limited at a hundred bucks. Don't allow legislators to give other, basically launder money from their campaign account to another legislator for their race. That's allowed. There's so many of these issues. And then also making sure that you have to expend all the money in your account before that election cycle is done. So you can't carry over and amass a million dollars like Senator Del Cruz. I mean, so these are all things that interfere with the people's voice being heard. The people's voice will not be heard over corporate lobbyists.
Thank you, Kim Kokoyomoto. Scott Psyki.
So following the indictment of Senator English and Representative Cullen a couple of years ago, I took the step before meeting a commission, an independent commission, to recommend standard of conduct proposals to the House. And that commission was chaired by Judge Dan Foley. And that commission was comprised only of experts, it was outside people. It was not comprised of legislators. The House adopted twenty-one of the twenty-three recommendations from the commission, including standards affecting contributions, lobbyists, enhancing criminal penalties for bribes, disclosures, and fundraising during the legislative session. So the House took a big step forward in creating that commission. But we know there's always more work to be done. Things can be improved in the future.
Thank you. President District Twelve, Shatara Dabs.
Like I said earlier, making, being able to navigate government websites is a big, a big thing. Making it easy to access financial reports from our legislators is a very important thing. And to, we should start, I'm sorry, I have a brain fart. Logging down what lobbyists they talk to, companies they talk to, organizations they talk to, and to keeping a clear record of who talks to what, what meeting agendas they are talking about. Not specifics, but just a general idea of what, you know, they're going to talk about, just so the public can see what they're doing behind the scenes, but not to intrude on that type of meeting. But just to make it more transparent and, yeah, sorry, ran out of time.
Thank you. Sharon Moriwaki.
Let me take a different perspective from the inside out. I have served in the Senate for six years. We, and I, you know, you can say about different legislators, but we all try to serve our districts. I work really hard. I think I see my colleagues working very hard. This corruption and slanting, the kinds of ways that people slant legislators or any public servant is, I think, a disservice because it's very hard work. And when you look at people who you want to run, they don't want to do it. Say, you know, people come up to me, why are you doing this? Because really, it's all of us hoping that we can make a difference. And so the more that you push people into saying they're corrupt, you paint a picture that is, to me, counterproductive. So I would like everybody to think in terms of, if you were in our shoes, what would you do? And how can we work together to make this a better community?
Moving on to our council district candidates, Brendan Schultz.
So as a public servant and a leader, it really has to start with me in combating corruption, which is why I'm not participating in pay to play during my campaign. And I've pledged not to accept a self-appointed salary increase. That behavior, which I have embodied throughout my campaign, I will carry with me into government. And also as far as looking at the municipal structures that we have, I think we need to look at who's appointed to the various boards and who's appointed to administrative positions. Particularly, I a campaign website, I've said it publicly numerous times, I'm going to be looking at who's been appointed to Hart, the Board of Hart, and who should be unappointed from the Board of Hart. So that project doesn't return to being a gravy train for the economic who's who of Honolulu as it was when it first started. Fortunately, it's progressing well now. But there are certain individuals who have appeared to have engaged in bullying who need to resign or be publicly pushed to resign from their positions on that board. I will also carry that philosophy into other positions of public service.
Thank you. Scott Nishimoto.
Thank you. So the past two years, the legislature has taken a strong stand, like Representative, like Speaker Psyki said. We created the Foley Commission. They came back with recommendations. We adopted the bulk of those recommendations. Is there, are we can do? I'm one, like, we need twenty-six members of the Senate to pass anything. Getting an agreement on that kind of agreement is tough. Some of these things take time. Do you feel like we will revisit a lot of these Foley recommendations? And, you know, hopefully they'll pass in the future.
Thank you. For House District Twenty-four, Adrian Tam.
Thank you. You know, I really appreciate the Foley Commission and their recommendations. And I'm really happy to have voted for every single recommendation that came before us. I think one thing that I absolutely think will help us, and I've been very vocal in my support for this, is a full-time legislature. So let's take, for example, you know, if Jeannie were to come to me in February for a bill proposal while we are in legislative session, I have to tell her, no, I'm sorry, wait till next January. You know, that's kind of weird. You know, I don't think that's, that's a huge disservice. To squeeze an entire legislative session to talk about all the bills that we go through in just four months really isn't good practice or good governing, in my opinion. I also don't believe that legislators should be able to hold outside positions, like jobs outside. I think that's a huge conflict of interest and a full-time legislature will stop that.
Thank you, Adrian. For House District Twenty-three, Ikaika Olds.
One minute, gotta make it quick. So it's interesting that the representatives and senators have been talking about Judge Foley. So Judge Foley has publicly endorsed my run because he knows that I want to get tough on ethics and government reforms. And one of the things is to back up Kim Kokou here, which is spending limits. So not only donations being given to candidates, but how much you can actually spend. So incumbents have a natural foot up on everyday drills who are trying to run. And so we should have just the equal bar. Same set amount of money, everybody has to be able to use the same amount. And what happens is who's going to be the most responsible and who's going to be able to run the best campaign, what you have. The next thing is accountability really comes down to being able to see your elected officials. And for me, I would like to have these officials to be present at the neighborhood boards. The online stuff from COVID should be eliminated. You should physically be coming in.
Thank you. Pat McCain.
Okay, I'm gonna speak quick because I only got a minute. I got a little bit different view on things. One, I think that we need to instill in our government workers that they are there to uphold the law. And I think that some of the DPP people got lost along the way. I was an immigration officer for fifteen years. And a couple of times did people try to slip me the red and gold envelope. And I turned it away because I always thought, nope, once you do that, they own you. But as far as campaign contributions, one of the sayings that I learned in Washington was, if you can't take their money and spit in their eye, you're in the wrong business. You know, so I don't, I don't, I never saw the quid pro quo for you giving me money. I do stuff. I never saw that. But I know folks get lost along the way. And, you know, we only had but a couple of them. You know, English and the other guy that did the crazy stupid thing and ruined their careers.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Ian Ross.
Thank you. We need to end pay to play politics. One of the greatest, largest loopholes is that while we stop people who are contractors with the state who are receiving money from contributing to campaigns, we allow their board directors to continue to donate. We allow their spouses, the board directors and the contractors, to continue to donate. This is a giant loophole. And don't go thinking this is just, you know, a small thing, a little money, a little here, a little there. The estimation the past decade or so is thirty million dollars have come through in campaign contributions in this way. We need to close that loophole right away. It's one of the bills I intend to introduce if elected. When we talk about transparency at the legislature, there's a lot of informal barriers. So it's really hard if you work during the day, if you're an everyday person, to go out and talk to legislators and testify on bills and be a full participant. Because you only get forty-eight hour notice. I know the city council has a seven-day notice. I would say if sunshine law is good enough for you on the neighborhood board, it's good enough for the city council. It should also be good enough for the legislature. So we should adopt more of those standards. And I agree with Representative Tam one hundred percent on the need for a year-round legislature. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, candidates, for being here tonight. Let's end the night with your closing statements. One minute, starting with Scott Psyki online.
Thank you to Charlie and the board members for organizing this forum. Thank you to all of the residents who have listened in on this conversation. I wanted to say that I will continue to work in this partnership with other elected officials, the governor, the mayor, and state and city agencies to bring about the kind of results that we've seen for District Twenty-five. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And let's start on this side with Ikaika Olds and work our way down for your closing statements.
I just want to start off by saying thank you to the Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board for holding this forum. You know, it's very important for the candidates to be able to get some face time. Outside of knocking on doors, it's very rare. No, I've lived the life of service. While my service has been in the shadows and not in the spotlight in front of cameras for TV, I've been making an impact first with our country and then within our communities. And I would like that decade of experience with homelessness, with crime, with affordable housing, with education, into the legislature to bring candidates from boots on the ground experience that a lot of the people in the legislature don't have.
Thank you, Brendan Schultz.
Mahalo to the board and everyone who came out this evening. It's been a pleasure. Once again, my name is Brendan Schultz, born and raised on the island of Oahu. I have worked my entire career as a humanitarian and international development professional. I'm running for Honolulu City Council District Five to reduce our cost of living, ensure community stability, restore government integrity. I'm the only candidate in this election who has pledged to not accept the sixty-four percent salary increase that was self-appointed by the city this past year, as well as who lists all the policies I support on my website. I understand I have discussed a lot this evening. Some of it might be a little bit controversial. Some of it might be a little bit convoluted. I invite everyone to please review the policies that I have on my website. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. My number's up on there or shoot me an email. I do respond directly to all of those. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you. Shatara Dabs.
I just wanted to thank the board and the public for coming out and everyone here. I just wanted to say I lived through the issues that I'm trying to solve and I'm really pushing hard to fix those if elected in. And it's an honor and privilege to be able to do this. I never thought I would, but it's amazing to be a part of everyone here. And, you know, we're all just trying to fix things, right? We want to do good for our people, for Hawaii. And thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you. Kim Kokoyomoto.
Thank you. I'm basically running to restore representational democracy back to the State House. Excuse me, I'm speaking. Back to the State House, as you heard Representative Nishimoto talk about, there's twenty-six representatives. And if they agree, well, oftentimes, they're not even given the opportunity to hear a bill unless it's been approved by my opponent, unless he's granted them the opportunity to hear the bill. And he can, as Speaker of the House, he can actually kill a bill by putting pressure on different campaign chairs. And we've seen that with the Clean Elections Bill, quite frankly. There's a lot of theater and there's a lot more we could do. I have a website, kimkokou.com. I have a petition on that website asking for a special legislative session to address condo insurance, the skyrocketing condo insurance, also to address rent relief and eviction mediation. Thank you so much for this.
Thank you. Patrick McCain.
I would like to thank everybody that came here tonight. I'd like to thank all the candidates who are running. I've had the honor to work the city, state, and federal legislative and executive branch. And I love government and I love the whole process. I'm running. I believe I'm a dark horse. I don't have union support. If I get elected, I will think of my constituents first. I won't think of whoever gave me money or whoever endorsed me. You know, my opponents are good, good people. In different circumstances, I'd be supporting them. But I ask for your support and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Aloha.
Thank you. Scott Nishimoto.
Thank you. Well, thank you to the board and thank you to the candidates for the robust discussion tonight. I have served in the State House for the last twenty-two years. I have built my career on being accessible and responsive to my constituents. It's what I take pride in. All my constituents have my cell phone number. I'm constantly walking my community, going door to door, finding out what people want and for me to be listening to them so that I can be their representative in the State House for the past twenty-two years and hopefully in the council in the future. I do want to digress. I do want to thank my girlfriend Debbie who's here tonight. Our family members make huge sacrifices for us to do this and I just want to say thank you to her.
Thank you. Adrian Tam.
I want to thank all the candidates. I want to thank all the candidates, the board and everyone who tuned in tonight for, you know, this robust forum. I know that you love spending two hours with us. Thank you. Um, but you know, I want to be the representative that would be a, someone that you can, um, you know, approach with any kind of issue. And that's why many of my constituents also have my cell phone number. You know, feel free to reach me anytime. Um, I've always tried, well, I try to respond quickly. Sometimes things come at like two AM in the morning and I'm still sleeping, but please understand that I wake up at like seven. Um, but I hope I can get your support again. Thank you so much for the honor of representing you.
Thank you. Ian Ross.
I really want to mahalo everyone as well, especially the people who come out who are not neighborhood board members, like you took that extra initiative. But also to the neighborhood board members who took the time to write really thoughtful questions, I think really activated some really robust conversation this evening. Once again, I was born, raised here in Hawaii. Um, this is my home. Um, this is, uh, in every capacity I've had in my entire adult life, I've tried to be an active member of every community I've been a part of. This is meant being a part of the neighborhood board system, volunteering on boards and with nonprofits, uh, working in government, uh, working for nonprofits in advocacy roles. I'm proud of what I've been able to accomplish so far, but this evening really highlights how much more work there is to do and how much more work there is to do together. And, you know, how many things we've allowed to get to a near crisis level? I think that highlights the importance of hiring and selecting legislators who are ready to hit the ground running on day one. And I'm ready to be that strong voice for the district, to continue to work on neighborhood boards, continue to work with, uh, our nonprofit sector, to continue to work with the community.
Thank you.
I humbly ask for your support.
And lastly, Sharon Maury Walkie.
Aloha, everyone, and thank you again with everybody here. Um, you know, I, I said I ran six years ago to represent Kakaako. What I learned in the six years is that there are complex problems, homeless, affordable housing, uh, the crime, um, and, and sea level rise, and all of those issues are really complex issues. I've worked on, on the homeless problem from getting the prosecutor, a homeless coordinator from the city and the state, all the way to the courts to come up with, coming up with the Homeless and Housing Solutions Office for the state. Um, looking at mental health and substance abuse and coming up with programs, the first ever medical substance abuse program that we can detox some of the, uh, the homeless that are out on the street. And so ultimately the work is not done. So it is an honor to have served you for the last six years. And I think that I still have work to do. So if you have any faith that I will complete the work that I've started, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much to, to everyone for being here this evening. I know we ran a little long, but we value your time, especially since some of us have not met some of you. Some of us may have seen you, but we haven't really heard your take on some of these issues, uh, questions that the board has come up with based on what our constituents have been telling us every time we go to meetings. So we really appreciate you being here tonight. Um, I have to technically gavel back in. Just to go over announcements, we have our social media accounts on Instagram and Facebook. Our neighborhood board meetings are every fourth Tuesday of the month. Our action committee meetings are every second Thursday of the month. Um, this is going to be broadcasted on Olelo. So again, thank you folks and thank you, Olelo, for being here. I do want to make the plea that it would be nice to have you folks during our meetings and not just special occasions like candidate forums. So thank you again. This meeting of the Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board is adjourned. And if we can have the candidates stay so we can take a, a photo real quick.